Wow. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande Council meeting. The first order of business is calling the meeting to order. And next, we'll have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Pastor Kyle Standforth from the Valley, Sun Valley Church. Pastor? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks, guys, for inviting me. It's an honor to do this. Let's pray this up. Our Father and our God, we thank you for your grace. Lord, we thank you for the people here. We just pray that you give them wisdom to know what's right and the courage to act on it. Lord, we thank you for this little corner of your kingdom called Casa Grande. And we just pray that you protect its people and its land and that you are present here tonight. We lift this up in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's do the roll call first, and then we'll do the minutes. So let the roll call show that all members are present.
So noted.
And now, item C, minutes. Mr. Powell?
Okay, the, we want to move to approve the council, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of September 6th, 2022, and consider accepting for the record the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of July 21st, 2022. Consider accepting for the record the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes for April 4th, 2022. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Youth Commission Minutes of August 13th, 2022. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Next are the Reclaims Against the City, item D.
Mayor McFarland and I move to accept and pay the claims dated August 31st to September 13th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda. Larry, any changes to the meeting agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Any council members, anybody? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. No special presentations. Next is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on council who wants to change or pull anything off the consent agenda? Staff, Larry?
We have none.
Audience? Public? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion, well, to approve.
Mayor McFarland and I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, move to item H, which is our public comments section. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Just as a reminder, please keep your comments at three minutes. And remember that the items you are discussing are not on our agenda, and therefore, we cannot discuss that item. So I do have a speaker card here. This is for Ms. Evelyn Kasuga. Evelyn, please state your name and your address.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Evelyn Kasuga. I live at 12769 West Morton Road in Casa Grande, although not in the city limits. But today, I am wearing my Arizona Town Hall hat. I'm a volunteer and the current board chair for the organization Arizona Town Hall. A number of you may be familiar with it. It's a nonprofit that's been around for 60 years. We're having our 60th year anniversary. We're about educating and connecting and empowering and engaging Arizonans on topics such as water and education and energy, criminal justice, and it goes on and on and on. So the topic for 2022 is mental health, substance use, and homelessness. And we launched this topic in April of this year with a research report conducted by ASU's Morrison Institute. And part of this process is reaching out to communities throughout the state of Arizona. We've been embarking on this to capture those statewide voices, to make sure that it's an interactive discussion with communities on how to address the challenges with those three topics, and particularly the intersection of all three topics. I know a number of you are working on those topics either individually or collectively, and you know that they're interrelated. So we've already started the series of community town halls. I mean, I was up in Sholo recently. We've been in Prescott, Sierra Vista, Douglas area. We've got them upcoming in Yuma, Mojave County, Flagstaff, Thatcher, Verde Bay, and on and on. Of course, Phoenix and Tucson, multiple ones. And working with Councilmember Donna McBride and the mayor and Bob Shogren primarily, we actually have two of them already scheduled for Pinell County. We've got one on September 28th from noon to four at Florence Unified, at Florence Unified School District Office. And then, on October 4th, 5:30 to 8:30 here in Casa Grande at the Redemption Church at 275 West Viola Street. There will be a statewide town hall, which is the collective, large, large one. The mayor attended the one this year. This one is going to be in person versus the all virtual we had to go to. So this will be on November 14th through the 16th at the SRP Para Club Facility in Tempe. So that's all I have. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions.
We can't ask them.
Oh, that's right. Never mind. You can ask me later.
We'll talk to you later.
All right. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Evelyn. All right, is there anyone else in the audience? You don't have to have filled out a speaker card. I will allow at random. Please give us your name and your address.
Hello, I am Nat Seewood, and the address is 513 East Bickle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And I wanted to speak on to the sale of the property that you were talking about earlier. I would not like to see the city give up land that they own for this kind of development, especially in a gateway that we come in from Pinell, and that there's so many things that are going to be needed in that northern section for a lot of the people that already live there, which they have to drive in long ways for a lot of businesses or necessities or anything like that. And the fact that it's kind of the first area that you see when you come off of I-10. And I would like to see the city do something with the property that they own that's more of a multi-use property that's going to benefit the residents in that area, whether it's more recreational, mixed use of maybe city facilities that would benefit the residents that live up in that area so they don't have to drive downtown. And I really would like the city to not sell property they have hold of. Property is worthwhile to hold on to so that you have the opportunity to really do things with it, that you can vision for the city that benefits everybody in the community. And I would like to see more input from the residents about a sale of that kind of magnitude with this. And I don't totally have things against manufactured homes, but I don't like the trend that the city has been forced into, partly because of the water rights. I understand that. But with the environment problems we have with the heat and water issues and things like that, I think that crammed-in kind of streets, cement slabs for parking on, and just manufactured homes, I don't think help our environment. And I'd like to see better-planned, environmentally-friendly facilities, whether it's apartments that are used or complexes, recreational, things like that, that would work in that area. There's a lot of drainage that we have in Casa Grande, and flooding is a problem. I know there's a lot of water that goes through that property also. So there's so many other concerns, and I wish you would not go through with the sale. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, then I will close the public comments section, and I'll move to item I, which is Award of Contracts. First item on the agenda under contracts is I-1, Considering Approval Resolution Number 5466, Accepting a Proposal for Tetra Tech Bass Inc. Landfill Engineering Services.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a three-year contract with options to extend up to two one-year extensions at the sole discretion of the city to Tetra Tech BAS Incorporated for engineering services at the city's landfill. The city intended to select a qualified consultant and did a request for proposals, and we received those from four different firms. We did evaluate each of those proposals and determined that Tetra Tech was the firm that we wanted to move forward with. And just to note, they've been performing services for the city's landfill since 2012. So they've done a great job for us, and we've developed a great partnership with them at the landfill. We'll be using them for a variety of things, not only engineering services, but also environmental services. They help us prepare for our permit submittals to the state and making sure that all of our information is gathered and technically accurate. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we did budget $100,000 for this, and we'll use that as we need it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Bob?
Mayor? Kevin, this is kind of in the general area of a question, and I thought about it last council meeting when we were buying dirt for the landfill. And then we have this on this meeting. Are we pursuing, and maybe too slowly, additional land for a larger or new landfill in which we could utilize to get dirt to use on the existing landfill? I certainly have no expertise in the landfill management business, but it seems like maybe we should head that way.
So the process to purchase a piece of property and go through the environmental steps that are needed to get it permitted is somewhere between five and 10 years. Now, we're currently, we still have plenty of time using this landfill at our current and projected increased rates of fill to utilize this, but it's something we're going to be starting in the next few years, to looking at that as an opportunity to purchase a new landfill and get that process started.
Okay, it's just not time yet.
Well, we've gone through that evaluation several times, and I have documents from when we've done it prior to me being here back in 2006. We went through evaluations on certain pieces of property. We're always looking, but the clock hasn't started ticking on we have to find a piece of property now. So we still have time to prepare.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
We have that big hole that's been existing at the rodeo grounds on the west side of it that has quite a bit of depth, and there's people that are using it. I don't know if that'd be helpful to you or not.
No, it would not.
Well, we'll just have the horses poop more then.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, then I would consider Resolution Number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5466, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, Accepting a Proposal from Truck Tech Bass Inc. for Landfill Engineering Services, Authorizing Expenditure of Public Funds and Authorizing Execution of a Contract.
Mayor McFarland and I would move for approval of Resolution Number 5466 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-2, Considering Approval Resolution Number 5467.
Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with RWC International LTD in an amount not to exceed $332,016 for the purchase of a 2023 crane carrier LET 2-44 chassis with a 25-yard Packmore rear-load refuse body for the use in our city's sanitation operations. These are rearloads where we use to collect our uncontained trash at residents and also within the alleys around the city. We have three of those in our fleet. The one that we are replacing is a 2009 auto car rear-load truck and is way past its useful life. However, we are going to be retaining that vehicle if this purchase is approved as a backup unit, and we're also just not seeing value in trade-ins at this moment with those. And quite honestly, we just don't know when our next vehicles are going to be purchased and when we'll find them. So just a thing we're taking advantage of now to keep that in our fleet as a retained vehicle. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have, I have a quick one. Kevin, you had mentioned in here that there was a 2% increase. Is there going to be a problem with the delivery because everything is so backlog? Have they told you, you know, once approved, how long it's going to take to get it?
I believe this one, we actually did a pre-order on it. They were willing to allow us to do that before we got authorization to purchase. Typically, they don't allow us to order until we have a PO in place, which puts us in a difficult position. So we've been working with the different vendors. We believe this one will be delivered in a timely fashion. I just, I don't recall how soon they can get it delivered, but we believe we have access to the vehicle.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a Resolution Number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5467, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, Accepting a Proposal from RWC International LTD for a 2023 rear-load refuse truck from the sanitation division, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to RWC International LTD in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona Department of Transportation and authorizing the transfer of funds.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 5467 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item I-3. Mr. Raines, this is Considering Approval of Ordinance Number 3340.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present the item this evening. Ordinance Number 3340 is authorizing the sale of a city-owned real property generally located at the northwest corner of Highway 287, Pinell Avenue, and Hopi Drive in Casa Grande. And we've spent about an hour in study session on the topic, so I don't know unless the mayor and council would like if I should go through the history of the acquisition and whatnot. But I thought what I could do, Mr. Mayor, is outline the various components of the letter of intent from the proposer for those that were not watching and or just arrived at the council meeting. The city has received a letter of intent from Asset Management Partners for approximately 120 acres of land that was acquired by the City of Casa Grande in 2008. The proposer is proposing to acquire the two parcels of land. They are indicating that they would, that they've made a purchase price offer of 6.9 million, subject to any adjustments that might be made as a result of unused buildable acres, although they do not anticipate there will be any essentially prorated share of the price of $57,500. They do have conditions to this particular offer. The conditions is ultimately that it would, the two parcels will be zoned to allow for a manufactured home development with 480 home sites with a minimum lot size of 50 by 100, so 5,000 square foot. Each site would be individually metered for water, sewer, gas, and cable, phone. The sites would be professionally landscaped. The development would include a community clubhouse, swimming pool, playground, and dog park. They would ultimately end up putting in $150,000 of earnest money to open escrow during which period they would do due diligence and would pursue a rezoning of the parcel. And I think that's an important point for those that may just be coming online to the meeting this evening. This is the land acquisition. In order for the land sale to continue, there is a rezone that would be necessary, so an application that would be filed and ultimately considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the mayor and council. Staff has evaluated that and would likely be looking to suggest a B4 zoning category. The close of the escrow for the site and transfer of the property shall occur within 90 days after the due diligence period had been finalized, and at the time of closing, the balance of the purchase price or approximately 6.750, 6,750,000 would be paid to the city, and the developer would initiate construction no later than nine months after securing the permits for this particular development, and the purchaser may request one six-month extension during that period of time. As I outlined in the study session, as well as was discussed by the mayor and council in the study session, there's three options. One is to retain the ownership of the 120 acres for use of the, for governmental purposes. Option number two would be to support the proposed land acquisition and development use as submitted with this letter of interest. And the last would be to reject the land acquisition development proposal, develop a process and plan for future mixed-use development, and rezone the property accordingly prior to marketing the development. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would pause for any questions.
Any questions?
Comment?
Comment?
Yeah, for people that weren't watching, the thing that really helps, I think, in hearing from people talking and people contacting me is that there will be a real time to get public input at the planning level. And the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear this, and the council will hear it again. And that way we'll see if, what people are thinking, because then we'll see the actual plan, the actual traffic, and know more about it at that point. So that's what helps me a lot with this.
And it doesn't close unless zoning is approved.
Correct. Lisa?
And I think we need to be ahead of it. I, I don't think we need to wait until that time. We already have not included the community on this. And I, I, I don't agree, but I wanted to also go through, I know for those of, those of you that weren't watching the, the study session, you know, some of the key issues to consider were that Penel Avenue is the gateway to the community. And, you know, of course, you know, people come in, there's commuters that come in. We have just as many young professionals commuting in from the Phoenix area that are looking for more mixed-use, more trendy places to stay and are going back to Phoenix, you know, to, to live. So I think the whole idea of, you know, we know that we can do a minor land division of five lots on here. There's definitely other opportunities than just a five hundred, four hundred and eighty unit manufactured home development. Again, I have nothing against manufactured homes. I think that it's very important to offer diverse housing options in our community. However, I just don't think, since this is city property, kind of like the, the lady that came and spoke, I swear you guys, I didn't ask her to speak, but, but I really appreciate you coming. And, you know, we haven't had a public hearing on this yet, so we don't know what the community is going to say. But I would like to be ahead of it and not just settle. I understand, you know, Mayor, I know you talked about the history and Larry of us putting this land up, you know, with, out to, you know, to sell, and that was in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. There's a lot that's changed since two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. So I understand, we were in a room and we talked about the sale because we're going to use other property for parks, but a lot has changed. And it kind of like, you know, with the, with the, the woman that spoke, why do we have to sell this property right now? And why do we have to? I, I think it's just a lack of vision. I think we need to look at the community as a whole. You go into so many other communities, and that's not the first thing you see is five hundred manufactured homes in these communities. Look at our surrounding communities, you guys. And so I think, again, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a vision. It's what I want people to see when they come into our community. And I want to see, you know, I, I know, I sat in the conversation, the PowerPoint with Four Leaf Development. They're, it's a nice development. I think there's a need for it. We, we have some manufactured homes in other areas in the community. It looks like we are going to have another one right down the street. So I guess we're going to become the manufactured home, you know, corridor on Penel if this goes forward. But is that what we want? Is that what the community really wants? And that's what I'm asking, is I think your third option, Larry, of, you know, waiting, you know, getting, getting the community's input. This is their land. Get the input from the community, and if that's what they want to do, that's what they can do. But I think by doing mixed use, having, you know, a nice apartment complex, open, open, you know, space, you know, grocery, restaurants, entertainment, it does not have to be done overnight. But our community has changed tremendously in the last four years. And so I think we are just settling. When, when the, the vision should be bigger on, on Penel. And, and we, we saw it here, you know, I know Larry talked about the growth on Florence Boulevard. It's maxed out, the traffic is terrible. There's people on Penel that live in some of these subdivisions that are asking for, 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 you know, entertainment and grocery and, you know, you know, multifamily, whatever it is. So I, I know there's a need, I know there is, for this product, I do. But I, I just, city-owned property, we, we, we can create a vision on this property. And so I don't, sorry to go through it all again, but I just, I just think that a lot has changed in four years, and I don't think this is the time to sell this property. And I don't think, when you talk about the highest and best use of this property, this land, it might be a high, you know, the, the land, because of course we know land is going for a lot, but is it really the best use? Is it really the best use? Ask yourselves that. So that's it.
Go ahead.
And, you know, we, I feel that, you know, we have the opportunity to make a decision tonight. I think that we have heard from a lot of different people, I know that I have. I respect what Lisa's saying. One of the things that, that struck me is late today, I got a call from a, a young lady who is a single parent. And she asked, when are we going to start building? She didn't understand the process of all this. And so when Lisa, when you mentioned about lack of vision, the thing that stuck with me is she said, for the first time, I think I may be able to live the American dream and own my own home and take care of my family and be in a safe place. And so for me, that drove home that while it is a gateway to our community, but quite frankly, if we look at the gateway in other areas of our community, they don't look as well as this is going to look. And so I just think that we have the opportunity that it's not a lack of vision, it's just where we want that area to go. And I think that, you know, we each have our own, our own style and what we feel that it is. And I think that we have to look at that, and this is not the last step. This is just the first step, and I think that we need to think about that.
Mr. Lavender?
Well, I'm just concerned about the comment about lack of public input. We have had conversations in executive session, which we were not allowed to share outside of here. I'm going to assume the developer is asking us favorability of lease going forward in the process. As Mr. Herman, Councilmember Herman said, this is the process now of getting the plan approved. And so we, our hands have been tied because we've been in executive session for, to save the lack of community input. We haven't had the opportunity to do it, but now enters that part. We're getting ready, we're asking the voters of this community to afford, to pay for one hundred and twenty-five million dollars in bonds, and we're sitting on five million dollars of property that we purchased for recreation, we're not even going to use for that purpose. And so to continue to sit on that property is a concern as well. And this might be the only viable option we have for, to recoup some of the, you know, we get to recoup the land back and add a little bit of a profit.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I will be supporting this tonight for a couple of different reasons. One is I agree with what Donna said, this is attainable, affordable housing. And I don't know how many times we have talked about that. And now here's an opportunity to respond to that, and I think we need to, we need to take it. We also boast often about how many jobs we, we are creating and bringing in to the community. And no fault of our own, but the, the housing market has weeded out a lot of these people. They can't even afford an apartment, let alone buy a, a site-built home. And this will give them an option to, to come in and own a home, live in a nice neighborhood with amenities. And I, I also wanted to comment on the appearance of the development. We have ample opportunity to manage that when it comes in to, to be, to be approved. And there's no reason that, that this development can't look as good or better than the other developments up and down Penel Avenue. A nice wall, I think what I heard from them is it's very likely to be a gated community, so we're not going to have a lot of cut-through traffic. I think it'll look every bit as nice as Ropes and Ranch on Jimmy Kerr Boulevard. The other point I wanted to talk about is, is management of the development. The fact that they are planning on having onsite management is, is a big plus. And how, how it is run is, is going to be a key factor. If they are on top of managing it, taking care of it, making it look nice, and, and also, quite honestly, managing the tenants that are, that are in there, they have a huge effect on, on how this, this development will look to the community and be perceived by the community. And everything I've seen from their presentations appears that that's what they're in the business of doing. And I, and I trust that, that they will do it. I, I think it's a good location for this. I, I think people will jump on it. I think it'll, it'll fill up quickly, and I think they'll, they'll prove, they will prove to be a benefit, an asset to our community.
Anyone else? Any comments? Mr. Powell?
You know, I, as you go down Penel Avenue, it's been a gappy street. Going along and all of a sudden, there's a big open spot, and there's this and there's that. And where that's located is getting out where you're going, you know you're going to have some additional housing coming. Talked about recently. And I think it would, would be an ideal place to start from and go, and go toward the freeway from there. It, it just is hard to keep everything together if you're gappet. And, you know, you, somebody does something, and then there's an, an open spot there. We've had people complain about the Penel Avenue vision and traffic for a long time. A lot of people think it's, it's a jokey place to go by, and we ought to do better. And, and a lot of good things are happening there, but I think this is worth looking at.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number three, three, four, zero. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the sale of city-owned property generally located at the northwest corner of Highway two eighty-seven and Hopi Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing expenditure of public funds for reasonable and customary closing costs, and authorizing execution of documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland? I'm going to move for approval of ordinance three, three, four, zero. Normally I say as presented, but it appears to me, at least on the agenda, it says Highway two eighty-seven, and that's not correct. Isn't it three eighty-seven?
No.
Penel Avenue?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that it's two eighty-seven, isn't three eighty-seven going into Maricopa?
That's three forty-seven.
No, that's three forty-seven.
I defer to Mr. Wallace.
We can certainly look, and, and if it's a, I, I think it may be three eighty-seven, but I'm, you know, I'm going to have to, to try to look it up right now. If we do have a typographical error, I, I think it's very clear which property it is that we're talking about on Hopi Drive and Penel. And so I think that that, that's clear enough inside here.
Yeah, maybe if we just rephrase it from Penal and Hopi Drive.
It's three eighty, it's three eighty-seven.
Yeah, just read it as, you can either read it and present it as three eighty-seven, if, if we're sure of that, or change it to Penal Avenue, and, and either one, I think, will, will work.
Well, my motion stands for Penal Avenue and Hopi Drive.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second with the correction noted. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
No.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell? Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, move on to the item I four. Chief, I think this is yours, considering approval, resolution number five, four, six, eight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for this opportunity to talk to you about resolution five, four, six, eight. Fire Department staff is recommending that we purchase a 2021 wheeled coach type one F three fifty ambulance. I would purchasing it from Emergency Vehicle Group of Anaheim, California. The projected amount not to exceed is three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. It is a Ford F three fifty, four-by-four diesel, standard ambulance like you would normally see. We are purchasing this through our CIP fund, and we were budgeted for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars to purchase the ambulance. The purchase is being done through the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Service Agreement. This ambulance is being purchased to replace Unit four oh seven, which is our two thousand and three road rescue ambulance that we currently have that's nineteen years old. Four oh seven will, will basically move into a reserve capacity. We're not going to get rid of it right away because we're going to wait and see what happens with the C O N. So technically, one, two, this will be the third one. And in about probably three weeks, four weeks, I'll be coming back before you for the fourth ambulance purchase. So this will be number three that we would own. This will be number one of the two that were budgeted for this year. Sorry if that's confusing. There was a lot of talk, there was some stuff from the Department of Transportation. There was also testimony in the C O N hearing about that it was impossible to get ambulances. We were very fortunate when we were at the Arizona Fire Chiefs Convention in July. We had, we have a good relationship with the salesman from E V, E V G. And we were actually looking at the ambulance that was at the show, and we noticed that it was very similar to the ambulance we already have. And I jokingly around said to, I said to him, well, is this one for sale? And he goes, it is to you if you want it. And we kind of looked at each other, well, we'll take it, we'll figure out some way to get it. So we were pretty happy about that, and we called Mr. Rains to let him know about it so we could work out the details of that. But we're not waiting two years, we're going to, we're going to take delivery of this. It's actually at the factory now. And all they have to do is change some of the cabinet configuration in the back and paint it red and put Casa Grande stickers and that kind of stuff on it. So it's, it's just going to have some minor alterations done to it before we'll take delivery of it. And that's all. If you guys have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Powell?
Chief, have you got any new ambulances that have come in recently?
Uh, no, sir. The only, we, we have two ambulances right now. We have two thousand.
The reason I ask is I've seen one that looked a little different than what I've seen before in the fire department. Maybe I just saw it wrong.
Yeah, our, our two look almost identical. Our, our two thousand and three, you can't tell much difference between the two thousand and three and the two thousand and nineteen.
Answers my question.
Yes, sir.
So this is a low-acuity unit, is, will be what it's mostly used for, or?
No, sir. So there's no such thing as a low-acuity, that's just a term that was made up by somebody. It, it's a identification term. An ambulance is an ambulance is an ambulance. So our ambulance is when they come here, it's an ambulance, but it, it doesn't actually get authorized as an ambulance until we have it inspected by the Department of Health Services. We can't have an ambulance inspected until we get the C O N. So we have two ambulances, and this will be a third ambulance. The low-acuity unit, we can kind of, we can use anything for a low-acuity unit. We could use a.
A van.
A Honda Ford if we wanted to, because, you know, they're responding, and they're, and they're doing an evaluation and waiting for the ambulance to get there. So no, yeah, it's another, it's another ambulance, just like the other two that we have.
But we use them to, to help people, you know, like be the first on the scene. I'm a big fan of the program, that's what I'm trying to get at. So this will be used to get out there first and help people that need it.
Yeah, our, our intent is to use these ambulances to transport people to the hospital once the C O N is granted.
Okay. But yeah, I'm a big fan of our program, how we've been using them, so I just wanted to encourage this.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number five, four, six, eight. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Emergency Vehicle Group, Inc. for the purchase of a 2021 city medic ambulance, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of the contract with or purchase order to Emergency Vehicle Group, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number five, four, six, eight as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote for item I four?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell?
Lavender, yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move into our boards and commissions. This is item J one, and this is to consider approving the reappointment of Melissa Yost Fuentes to the Historic Preservation Commission with the terms to extend through August eighth of two thousand and twenty-five. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Fuentes for her services over the last few years and thank her for re-upping for another term. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, then I entertain a motion to approve Ms. Fuentes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Fuentes. You are now back on the Historic Preservation Commission. All right, next is item L. These are public meetings, public hearings, open records, reviews. So item L one is a public hearing to consider approval of resolution number five, four, six, nine. Mayor Allen?
Mayor and council, we'll end this quickly. Staff is recommending the approval of the program year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR. The City of Casa Grande has prepared the 2021 CAPR report as required by federal regulations. The report details projects, accomplishment, as well as expenditures throughout the period from July first, 2021 through June thirtieth of 2022 for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of the report is to measure what the extent the jurisdictions are meeting primary, priority needs, goals, and strategies as outlined in the 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan. A fifteen-day public comment period on the report began on September fourth, 2022 through September eighteenth, 2022. A copy of the CAPR was posted online, and a hard copy was also available at the Community Development Office to give the public an opportunity to comment on the CAPR. We received no comments. The C D B G funds were used to complete the listed projects to benefit the residents of Casa Grande. Without the C D B G funds, many of these projects would not have been completed. I just wanted to highlight a few of how we did spend our money. This also included some CARES money. What am I doing wrong?
You don't have your co-pilot there.
I know. I just wanted to highlight Seeds of Hope, our senior connectus program. They served twenty-eight seniors, they spent eighteen thousand dollars of their, their funding. The Boys and Girls Club have their summer programs last July. They served fifty-six youth. The Casa Grande Police Department have their homeless outreach program. They contacted one hundred and forty-five homeless contacts. We had, oop. Is this me or?
Operator error.
And the Opportunity Tree, they provided services to nineteen seniors with disabilities, and Community Action Human Resource Agency served one hundred and twenty-seven individuals. Against abuse, this, this are CARES money that we had carried forward. Against abuse, they served twenty-two individuals with rental assistance. Dorothy Powell Senior Center served three hundred and twenty-seven seniors. Seeds of Hope, their food insecurities program, served one thousand, three hundred and fifty-one low-to-moderate income residents. Community Action Human Resource Agency served two hundred and six clients. And with the Housing and Neighborhood Improvements Programs, that's our owner-occupied housing program, we completed three housing projects last year, and one is under construction currently. We have, and we also use our Department of Home Housing money to supplement the, the grant money. We, for code enforcement for Powell's program, there were six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine code violations, contacts, that's how he's reporting this. And we also had our Planning Administration serve, use one hundred and thirty-four thousand for our Planning Administration of the program. Our Public Facilities Improvements, which most of these were Public Works programs except for the Rotary Park. But Public Works, they completed the South Side Sidewalk Project. They completed the Cottonwood Garden Streetlight Project. They completed the West Side Sidewalk Project. City Hall ADA Campus Improvements, hopefully you guys were impressed with the work that was done out front, removing the step by the, by the fountain and removing any, removing all the concrete for trip hazards getting to and from the building. Rotary Park Improvement, it's in progress. They should be starting in the next couple of weeks. And Dorothy Powell Senior Center is still in progress. They have a lot of it completed over there, but we're still, they have the new floor put in. We're just waiting on some fixtures to be put in. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
That one on the bottom there that says Powell on it?
Yes, the very important one.
It's my mother's, the senior center. Can we take? Can we take books in there for the seniors? Is there a place we could, I took 47 books in there a couple of times. And just for them to use them themselves. I wondered if that's something we could do or that would cause kind of an issue. But it would seem like it would be nice and would be affordable.
Yeah, like a lending library? I'm not sure. Larry, is that something they, for the Dorothy Powell Senior Center, are they allowed to take, donate books in there?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, and if they get too many, they can always carry them over to the library, which is right next door. Okay, anybody have any questions for Mary Ellen? Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. This is a, a public hearing, is it not? Yes? Okay, so don't go anywhere. I will open the floor then to any public who would like to address this issue. Any of the items that were listed are fair game. Anybody? It's all good work, so I'm not sure anybody would have anything to complain about.
Correct.
I know I've been to a couple ribbon cuttings for a couple of the houses this year, so. And they really did a nice job on those houses, so. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing then. And I don't think there's any action on this, is there, Larry? It's just a report.
His resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number five, four, six, nine. A resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the program year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution five, four, six, nine as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, home stretch, reports. I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Lavender.
I don't have a whole lot because I was out of town last week, but today we did have a Zoom webinar at Vilago. We had 800 students on and our special guest was Deputy Chief Ramirez. And he did a phenomenal job talking to the kids about what it's like to be a police officer today, what it takes, and represented our city and our department very well. So thank you Deputy Chief for doing that. And I got some emails from some students that really enjoyed hearing from you.
Okay, Donna?
I know everybody will probably talk about, but I just want to thank all the, the city staff that really helped with the Casa Grande Mountain cleanup. And Scott McEwen was just amazing to have over 300 volunteers out there after such a storm that we had. It was, it was amazing and it was really a nice, a nice way to pay tribute to 9/11. Attended the chamber luncheon last week. I always think I know everything there is to know about Lucid and then they speak and it's like a whole new ballgame again. I wanted to mention Coffee with a Cop is this Wednesday at the Cookie Jar and invite people down. And also Silent Witness is planned for the 24th from 5:30 to 8:30 again. So I hope everybody comes out. That's always a great event to go to. And that's it.
Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. For those of you who don't get to sit next to the mayor, you look at his calendar. I'm really happy that I don't have his calendar because it's pretty full. But speaking of calendars, mark yours for October 22nd. Not only is it my anniversary that I remember, but it will be the Youth Commission Shredding Day at First American Credit Union, 1001 North Panal Avenue. And we may do e-cycling, we're getting that all lined up now. So we want to thank them. And October 22nd, nine o'clock, there'll be more publicity coming, but mark your calendars for that. Chamber Lunch was great, good to hear from Lucid. And a neat thing happened at the Rec Center is through, I know that the Arts and Humanities Department Commission had some, Gloria, had some stuff to do. And there was a donation made and some people helped out. And we got new sculpture, or we purchased some sculptures and set them at the Rec Center of kids playing and kids in a tree. And I know there's gonna be more information about forthcoming, but if you haven't seen it yet, it's really neat, like bronze sculptures of kids at the Rec Center. Due to my wife, I really appreciate public art that much, much more now. So it's, it's really neat. So if you guys go by there and see it, that's awesome. And ASU got a new coach. So I'm happy about that.
Well, it's not Herm Edwards anymore.
Yeah. Mr. Powell?
We had a meeting at the Presbyterian Church for the faith community. We, we talked about the water issue that so got us all pinched right now and trying to figure out ways that we could get water down here. The guy that started it basically said to begin with is, we don't have enough water. We just do not have enough water. And if we, if we're not careful and if we can't get the water in another manner, the, if you put it in the ground, you're gonna have to go be desert. So you, you're cut off from it and one engine open on the other. And we had, we had a good group in there, a lot of good questions. And truthfully, it'll work. We just need, we just need to get some help with it. Bring that water down on a regular basis from, from Davenport, Iowa, in a pipeline. Pipe fitters came to that one meeting and they're anxious to see about getting to go.
Ten years worth of jobs.
I did have a chance to tell a story that the mayor told me. Did you hear me?
I heard you.
Okay.
What's the story I told you?
The mayor had, had talked about that, the old Presbyterian Church, Rock Church. And he, the, getting rusty up there on the Kuplo on the top. And we had Reverend Jones was the minister, he's a Welshman. And he was sitting there looking at it. And the mayor came up and he said, what are you looking at? And he said, well, that's dirty up there. And he said, well, he said, you know how you clean it? And he said, he said, no. He said, what horse urine? And he said, but how would you get the horse up there?
Mayor, that's a good one.
I don't remember that story. Lisa?
No, and I wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem Powell for going to the Faith Alliance meeting and speaking on water. And he had a lot of people there that were supporting him and ready to pitch in for feasibility study and, and do everything. So, but no, and actually, you know, and, and Jody, thanks for doing the article on, on his presentation. But, but I think bottom line, and I, and I know I brought it up, brought it up at the last meeting, is there's a lot of people that really don't understand this water thing. Not only, not, not that, but even the certificates and how we're still building when there's a shortage. And, and you know, Mayor, there was so much engagement, you know, this is our faith community, you know? And I think it just shows that the general population really, I, I really do think it's a good idea to do some type of public meeting, whether it's in the library here, an open meeting to really tell people what, you know, what's involved and how we're doing all this building. There was a lot of discussion on conservation. You know, so we talked about the Save It Campaign and, you know, why aren't we doing more as a city? And I told them, we're, you know, working on that and moving towards this conservation. But, but it was very engaging, a lot of questions. And I really would like to see at some point, maybe just do some type of presentation, Q and A, open, you know, conversation for just the general public to come in and learn. Because it was, it was very engaging, you know, for the faith community. So let's see, as far as, as you guys know, it's Hispanic Heritage Month. And so I went to Eloy and they do such a great celebration, you guys, for the Fiesta de Patrías. On 16th, no, so it was this weekend. Their Fiesta de Patrías was, was just so nice. And literally the whole community was out and it was just so fun. And I just wanted to compliment the city and, you know, of course Ralph Varela and Norrie Varell and Mary Lou Rosales, some of my fellow Latino Familia Initiative group. But they do a fantastic job and I would encourage all of you. Of course, this brought back memories because in 1956, my mom was crowned queen during the Fiesta de Patrías in September, or I'm in Chicago. So brought back memories, not that I was there, but memories. I wasn't there, but.
Almost, you heard about it.
Memories, yeah, exactly.
She saw the pictures.
The pictures, the memories of the pictures. I got the pictures from my dad. And then, so anyway, so, you know, I'm sure there'll be other activities going on. And then some of you may have gotten a, a letter from Child and Family Resources. They're having a little event at Carmcnap Park on Thursday. I think Councilmember Huddleston's gonna go and myself. I'm actually on the board for Child and Family Resources. But what they're celebrating is this year, the, the governor proposed a legislation which increased funding to healthy families programs, which is what Child and Family Resources is all about, is an evidence-based, primary prevention, home visitation program. They've been doing this for years in this community and throughout Panal County. And so they just kind of want to highlight and showcase some of the work that they're doing. So if any of you can pop over to Carmcnap Park at 9:30, or you can be there, wonderful. Just wanted to remind everyone of that. So, oh, and then the, the cleanup, I know I was out of town, but literally I was flying out of town for a wedding and Scott McEwen was literally calling me and texting me on things for that cleanup up until I was in the air. So, but no, so thank you, Scott McEwen and the committee, the high schools for everything they did. And the mayor, thank you, and staff.
Bob?
Last week had a lot of transportation information opportunities. Tuesday, ADOT did a presentation at Vista Grande High School on the proposed improvements to I-10 from the 202 to Panal Avenue. And it was very impressive. They had all the schematics laid out of the design for the different interchanges, which is, which there's going to be a lot of change and improvement. They also pointed out that their, their plan is to widen that road for three lanes, of course. But they said what you'll see is a rather large emergency lane on both sides so that they can actually add a fourth lane at some point. They're not advertising that, but they, they're planning.
Which you are.
Yeah, yeah. They, they are planning ahead and it was, it was very impressive. The timing on it still depends on that mega grant. They said it's probably going to be late November before we hear about that. But anyway, if you have opportunity to put a bug in somebody's ear about, we need the mega grant, that would be great. The mayor and I also attended the Rural Transportation Summit at Harrah's in Maricopa. It was a two-day event, Wednesday and Thursday. We got a lot of information on available funding and, and what different communities are, are doing. For me, one of the most eye-opening processes during the summit was a panel discussion that different communities in Arizona were proposing as their much-needed projects. And I have to say, it felt very good to be from Casa Grande. We saw a lot of communities that had well-traveled thoroughfares that were just cracked and full of potholes and they, and they had no funding to take care of these problems. So a shout out to Kevin for taking such good care of our roads on a, on a limited budget. We are head and shoulders above a lot of other, other communities' abilities. And the Biz Luncheon on Friday was great. It was good to hear from the new CEO of Lucid. He really has a lot of expertise. He sounded like, he likes the community connection. He spoke very highly of Casa Grande and the general area. So that was, that was good to hear. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Yeah, so we've been busy last couple of weeks. We've got, like Bob said, we attended the Rural Transportation Summit. I actually was on one of the panels there on regional connectivity. Really kind of talked about the projects in the RTA and the, and the Panal Regional Transportation that are on the ballot for November 8th. So we got to talk a little bit about that. In fact, even the next morning on the Panal Partnership Breakfast, we had another convening of a large group of people. It was sold out, probably 250 people or so at, at the event. And again, talking about the Panal Regional Transportation Authority and the, and all of the roads that come with that. So that, that'll be coming up here on November 8th. And then the cleanup went really, really well. I think we had 350 people plus there and it was really good to see everybody out. And I never realized there was so much brass in a shooting range as I found that day.
Really?
Oh, that people don't pick it up. I don't understand it. Yeah, I know, well, it's not where I hang out, Matt, you know that. So we really, we were, I've been real active in terms of being out on, on some panels and I'm on another panel tomorrow and, and speaking at the Age of Connections, which is really part of the Age Friendly Arizona Conference. And so I'll be speaking in the morning there. But it's an opportunity to talk about Casa Grande, to talk about what we're doing, the things that we're, we're all doing. And it's not me, it's us, it's the city council, it's staff, it's, it's city personnel. And so I really am proud of Casa Grande. I think that this group has done a really amazing job over the last five or six years. Thank you, Mr. Powell. And I think it's, it's starting to show, I'm starting to hear about it. The buzz up in Phoenix is Casa Grande. And so that's, that's good. It's always good to be noticed, at least in the positive, in positive vein. And I don't know, maybe it was the highway signs we got put on I-10, maybe that helped.
I think it was.
Yes.
Anyway, this week, again, a busy week. And we've got Panal Alliance Strategic, Strategic Meeting also this week. So we'll be working on that strategic plan. And just a lot of good stuff going on. So, thank you, everybody. Anybody else have any last, oh, you have a, go ahead, Matt.
Yes, so I forgot to add, after you get your paper shredded on the morning of October 22nd, the Rotary Club Casa Grande and Main Street are doing an Oktoberfest downtown at the Neon Sign Park. Fundraiser and activity for families to come down and have a good time.
Let's do it again.
October 22nd, shredding day and Oktoberfest and Matt Herman's anniversary.
I don't think so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's a big beast, it's a big beast that's been sitting here. Yeah, this is from, this was the award that the city got for, from the regional, it's a regional comprehensive plan study and it's from the American Planning Association, the Arizona chapter. And it was given to us as a community of population over 50,000. So it was a, it was a really nice award. We got it presented at a luncheon. We had a videotaped acceptance, so we didn't get to get up and talk to anybody. But it was still, it was still a great award and the thing weighs about 50 pounds. It's really heavy, so.
It's beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be upstairs with, with some of our other trophies. So just wanted to congratulate staff because this really is a, it was a, oh, gosh, eight months, eight-month-long process we went through, having public meetings and eventually taking the, the 2030 general plan to the vote of the people. And you all overwhelmingly approved it, over 85% approval rate, which is amazing. And so a lot, a lot of community input. It was, it was a good effort and it's a good plan on top of it all. So we're gonna use this plan for the next 10 years. And hopefully it will give us some vision into what we need to do for our city. So.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Some council member, or Mayor Pro Tem Powell gave me this book, I guess as a gift or something. I don't know why he gave it to me, but.
Looks like Harvey Panik's Little Red Book.
It's really interesting. So as you guys were all up, you know, whoever went cleaning the mountain. So someone brought this to Dick's store and it's a book that was on the top of the mountain, CG Mountain, and people wrote in it. So you can see it's wet, it's pretty weathered, but it's so neat because it has, you know, back from 2007, 2008, and it's comments, you know, people, I made it, I can't believe I finally made it to the top. You know, from different cities, it says, I mean, it's just so cute that they, people, you know, quiet on the trail, a little breezy, saw a baby snake on the road, first time to see one. first time to see one, heading to Flagstaff now. So if, if anyone wants to take a look at it, it just really, I know that's what I was telling them, we should go to the museum. But it's just really, because look at it, so weathered. And he said there was two, but now you only have one.
There's two, and I don't ever know.
He's gonna look for the other one. But if anyone wants to take a look at it, though, it's really, it's really neat.
That's cool.
Glad you found it.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, I'm from Massachusetts.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.